Good evening. I am calling this meeting to order. This is a regular business meeting of the Redmond City Council, held on Tuesday, June 18, 2024, commencing at 7:00 PM. I will call roll, starting with Council President Kritzer.
Here.
Council Vice President Forsyth.
Here.
Councilmember Slahudin.
Here.
Councilmember Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Noeva Kamina.
Here.
And Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
The first item on the agenda is the Redmond Police Department's 2023 Explorer of the Year. Lauren, would you like to come up and join me, please?
Point of order, real quick. Can we vote to excuse Councilmember Fields?
Yes, let's do that while she walks her way up. There is a motion to excuse Councilmember Fields. Is there a second?
Second.
It's moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Thank you. Welcome. Redmond Police Cadet Captain Lauren Jernigan was recently named the Washington Law Enforcement Explorer Advisors Explorer of the Year Award winner for 2023. Lauren was selected from a pool of candidates because she exemplifies W L E E A's core values of leadership, citizenship, professionalism, and public service. Joining the Redmond Police Cadet Program in 2021, Lauren instantly became a role model to other new cadets. She quickly rose through the ranks to Cadet Captain, where she has shown herself to be a tireless servant, level-headed decision-maker, and role model for those under her command. Lauren has volunteered countless hours and cares deeply about the success and well-being of those under her command. Cadet Captain Jernigan was publicly recognized on May 22, 2024, at the Washington Association of Sheriff's and Police Chiefs Spring Conference in Spokane, Washington. Lauren will be attending University of California Irvine, where she plans to pursue a degree in psychology, and we just want to have just a little public ceremony for you, Lauren, and just say congratulations and thank you for your service to our community, and we know that you're going to do amazing things in your career and college career. So, thank you so much for being part of Redmond. And with that, I think there's an award to give her, and there's also a group of people that are going to come up, be up to. So, we have a little bit more going on than just this. I did want to just give you a pin from the city that we give to students who do amazing work in our community. So, this is for you. Thank you. Come on. Some of you can come behind here, too. Split up in half. There you go. We'll organize ourselves. And there's this, too. Oh, Chief, I gotta use this.
So, Lauren, on behalf of the Redmond Police Department, we want to present you with this shadow box, which exemplifies your leadership and your dedication to our program and a memento for you to remember your time here with us in Redmond.
Thank you, sir.
What's that for me?
This is also from the chief. Chief's blanket, and a department coin, and a chief's coin. You're welcome.
Are we reading these, too?
I don't think it is.
And then we'll also present you with a letter of commendation from the chief's office that memorializes much of what the mayor said in her speech, so we won't read that all for you, but more stuff for your memory wall.
All right. Big picture with all of us. Thank you. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you all for being here. Just having a technical issue today. Saying hello. The next item on the agenda is items from the audience. I have the sign-in sheet for members of the public to speak tonight. When I read your name, you will come up to the podium and have three minutes to address the council. Councilmembers generally will not respond to comments or questions directly at the meeting. Members of the public are welcome to email the council anytime at mayorcouncil@redmond.gov. The views stated by members of the public do not represent the opinion of the City of Redmond. And as a reminder, RCW 4217A 555 prohibits any public comment during the council meeting in support or opposition of ballot propositions, measures, or candidates. All comments must pertain to the City of Redmond business as indicated on the sign-in sheet. And just an FYI, no one has signed up to speak remotely. So, we will start with Jaclyn Kimsey, then David Morton, then Alex Zimmerman, then Linda Seltzer.
Hello. Hello, my name is Jackie Kimsey, and I'm here to voice my support for affordable housing and multimodal transportation. Thank you for all your hard work that you've done to support the Plymouth affordable housing development on 16725 Cleveland Street, Redmond. Redmond is not immune to the national housing crisis, and it's clear we must do our part to build more affordable housing. I hope you ignore the misinformed people from the Safe East Side group who dehumanize and shame people who can't afford the high rent prices here in Redmond. Low-income earners like sales associates, teachers, waitresses, and nurses deserve to have affordable housing options right here in Redmond. That's why I fully support including the Plymouth Housing Project in Redmond's Housing Action Plan. As a resident of Southeast Redmond, I look forward to the opening of the Light Rail Station at Marymore Village. However, in the meantime, it is very dangerous getting to downtown from Redmond from Southeast Redmond. Can you open an alternative trail from Northeast 70th Street at the end of the East Lakes Mammoth Trail to Bear Creek Trail or 170th Avenue Northeast Central Connector Trail that is safe for pedestrians and cyclists? Crossing five lanes of traffic on Redmond Way is anxiety-inducing due to all the fast-moving cars rushing past. The construction for the bridge from the Bear Creek Trail going under 520 Highway looks to be complete. If the missing trail section between East Lakes Mammoth and Bear Creek were prioritized, we could have a safe passage to downtown before the 2025 Light Rail Station opening. If some construction barrels were used to separate the sidewalk from the street on either side of Redmond Way, it would be much safer for pedestrians and cyclists while the trail is completed. If the sidewalk on northeast, on the northeast side of Redmond Way was opened up, right now it's closed off, and a crosswalk was added at the northeast 70th Street light on Redmond Way, then people wouldn't have to cross in front of the highway off-ramp. The current infrastructure forces pedestrians to cross on a narrow sidewalk and cross a highway off-ramp, and then an extra-wide five-lane strode and another highway ramp just to get downtown. Every time I've walked or cycled this area, I feared for my life. The intersection of Redmond Way and 180th Street, just a little bit further down, has some clearly marked pedestrian crosswalks and bicycle lanes that look great. Unfortunately, y'all turn into unfit, narrow sidewalks and bike gutters on either side of the intersection. If I try to ride up Redmond Way or 180th, I find I must jump onto the sidewalk with my bike due to the dangerous street conditions. And I'm not the only one. I see swerving around pedestrians on that narrow sidewalk. To make matters worse, the sidewalk is pushed right up to the edge of the road. Oops, sorry.
Say, in conclusion.
And it also feels dangerous to walk along Redmond Way on 180th. Please build a bike pedestrian infrastructure there. Please consider the lives of people outside of cars when planning infrastructure projects. Thank you for your consideration.
Next, we have David Morton, then Alex Zimmerman, then Linda Seltzer.
Good evening, councilmembers and mayor. I'm David Morton. The current state building code describes three levels of required EV charging infrastructure. First, EV-capable parking spaces have just a conduit, often a PVC pipe, without the electrical wiring for a charging station. Second, EV-ready parking spaces have both conduit and electrical wiring. And third, EV charging stations which have conduit, wiring, and an EV charger. For new construction of multifamily buildings, state code requires that 45% of total parking spaces have at least the conduit for accommodating EV charging stations. This leaves 55% of multifamily parking spaces with no EV charging infrastructure. Redmond City Council could approve an amendment to its building code that would require that 100% of new multifamily parking spaces be at least EV-capable. This can be done by simply changing the current requirement for EV-capable new multifamily parking spaces from 10% to 65% of total parking spaces. EVs are essential in reducing Redmond's carbon footprint. Requiring all parking spaces at new multifamily buildings to be at least EV-capable will encourage residents to adopt cleaner transportation options. As more people transition to EVs, the need for accessible and convenient charging options has become critical. Multifamily residents, who often lack the ability to install personal chargers, will benefit from this infrastructure. Equipping new buildings with EV charging capabilities will meet this growing demand and support residents in making environmentally conscious choices. Economically, this amendment will position Redmond as a leader in green innovation. It will help, it will attract environmentally aware businesses and residents, and boost local economic growth. Integrating EV charging infrastructure during construction is more cost-effective than retrofitting existing buildings. This proactive approach will save developers and property owners significant expenses in the long run. Providing EV charging options to all residents of multifamily buildings will help ensure equal access to EV charging across diverse socioeconomic groups. In conclusion, adopting such a building code amendment for EV charging capability at new multifamily buildings is a strategic, environmentally sustainable, and economically sound decision. I ask the City Council to support and adopt an amendment to Redmond's building code that requires all parking spaces at new multifamily buildings to be at least EV-capable. Thank you.
Next, we have Alex Zimmerman.
Yeah, hello. Hello, council. Yeah. My name is Alex Zimmerman. I'm president of Stand Up America. Last meeting, you told me I spoke, supposed to be speak about city something, about business, your business, yeah. So, I will right now speak only about city business. Seven, eight people, all Democrat. What does this mean? This means fascism, because this is one-party system. You're not alone. Bellevue, Kirkland, Marstley Island, you all same. You all fascist. Don't interrupt me, please. She always interrupt me. Is she doing this legally? I you support her each time, but she interrupt me?
Mr. Zimmerman, we ask you to speak to the City of Redmond.
Exactly. I speak about your business. I speak about council, how you operate this, how you acting like a fascist. What is you want from me? What is you talking? So, I talking about tree, or about this BS? What is your people talking? I talking about city business. You, critical for city business, because you all have same opinion. This not a business. And each business, you know what it mean? You supposed to be have people who have different opinion. You don't. I only one man. Come to her and talk. You, I speak about you. You are a city business. Huh? This government is a city business, too. They not different than you. And I know this, and I spoke about this many times. This government not different. Why? Because when they will be different, they will fire you. You prosecute me right now in Bellevue. Four prosecution, four, three times before. So, right now have four prosecution.
Mr. Zimmerman, we're not the city of Bellevue, we're the city of Redmond.
No, exactly. What is you doing right now? This very stupid. Forgive my word. I speak about business. It's your business, how you operate. How you can operate when you all have same opinion? When all government under Democrat control is a pure Nazi Gestapo antisemitic principle? What is you talking about? I talking about you. How you operate? How government operates? This not a city business, so what is this? Why you interrupt me? You know this. So, I speak about business. You don't like this opinion. It's exactly what I told you. And you doing this and interrupt me all time, everywhere? You know what it mean? Because you thinking you not touchable. Huh? You have a court, and you forgot about this. Yep, court for everybody. For Trump, for me, and for you. You forgot about this. Please, don't forget. We all equal. Justice for all. When you not stopping me, interrupt, when I start speaking about city business, what is include them Nazi fascist junta, you know what it mean? In pure antisemitism, I will go to court. Thank you very much. This about business. Your bit.
Next, we have Linda Seltzer.
Well, I am actually talking about antisemitism and not, well, I am actually talking about antisemitism and not about trees. My name is Linda Seltzer. The subject of this comment is the Redmond 2050 Social Services Plan and its equity component, including the participation of an outside consulting firm. On page 32 of that web document, there is a list of participating organizations. Included are three predominantly white Christian churches, the mosque, an Indian group, and East Side for All. East Side for All includes immigrant and Asian groups and has presented events with the mosque, but it excludes Jews. It excludes Jews when it invited the East Side Police Chiefs and had them and their constituencies on the stage for opposing all hate, but no Jewish groups were included and no Jewish representatives were on the stage. I expect government agencies to conduct policy based on goals. What goal does the City of Redmond and its DEI unit achieve in excluding Jews? What goal does it achieve by announcing other history months except ours? What goal does it serve by failing to include us as an ethnic group in city planning? It seems to follow some kind of fashionable division of the world into oversimplified categories of white versus BIPOC, with classifications that have no correspondence to either DNA, biology, or history. It brings up the concept of the Schrödinger equation in the form of Schrödinger's Jews, not white, for millennia of European history, but at the same time white in current DEI. And a paradigm stating that race should be the sole classification used by the government stands in contrast to the theory of intersectionality based in the mouth of social sciences, such as analysis of variance. In contrast to the sole criterion of race criteria derived from Ibrahim Kendi, intersectionality allows for cross-relations between various biological, historical, and socioeconomic factors. Modern data analysis can determine that the factors are without even having to start out with the names of them, what the factors are. So, one could conclude that Jews are such a tiny population that it wasn't necessary to include them. This means that the concept of minority, half of all Jews were killed by the Nazis in World War II, and few of us who remain are logged into ancestry and family tree, trying to find out how we are related to those strangers in Australia and Argentina. So, yes, we are a minority group. One could argue that the Jews are wealthy and privileged, but that is an antisemitic stereotype. The Pew Charitable Trust surveys have told us 40% of all Jews cannot afford to own a home. Our workforce nonparticipation rate was 32%, and the 10%. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes items from the audience for this evening. Our next item of business is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So, moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any items to be polled?
I just wanted to comment on item six.
Let us, let's make sure we don't have anything else to poll. I don't see anything. Would you like to comment on prior or after the vote?
Prior.
Okay. Well, why don't you go right ahead, then?
Thank you. So, item six is about the 2024th Street project that's going on, and we had some great conversation in committee about making sure that we are planning appropriately for how that ends up looking in the long run. And I recently drove that road, just to check it out for myself. And I think I'm excited for the opportunity when we get to see the 30% design documents and have council weigh in on the bike infrastructure along that road, because it would be a huge missed opportunity for us to not make a critical connector for protected, safe bike and pedestrian access along that thoroughfare as it hits two schools and would connect an entire large section of our community to the opportunity to get to safely get to Light Rail. So, I'm excited about that project.
Right. Thank you so much. I'm going to read an ordinance into the record, Record Ordinance Number 3168, an ordinance of the City of Redmond, Washington approving the final plat of Garabino pursuant to RCW 5817170 and Redmond Zoning Code 2174030, and establishing an effective date. And with that, this is a roll call vote, starting with Council President Kritzer.
Aye.
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 And that passes 6 to 0. And with that, the passage of the consent agenda, we have a new lodging tax advisory committee member who will be sworn in at a later time. Next is hearings and reports. We have a public hearing on the MGP 12 Overlake East Master Plan Development Agreement and Phase 1 and 2 Site Plan Entitlements. I will read two things into the record. Resolution Number 1584, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Redmond, Washington, approving a development agreement for property owned by MGP 12 Overlake East LLC located on Parcels Number 6448500010, 6448500011, and 6448500020. And also, an ordinance Number 3169, an ordinance of the City of Redmond, Washington, adopting the Technical Committee's recommendation to approve the Overlake East Master Plan Development Phase 1 Site Plan Entitlement, Phase 2 Site Plan Entitlement and Development Agreement, Land 2022-00206, Land 2022-00207, Land 2022-00208, and Land 2022-00205, and establishing an effective date. And Carol Helen, Director of Planning and Community Development, will introduce this public hearing. There you go.
Is that on? Okay. Thank you. Sorry. Tonight, we are scheduled to have the public hearing. Thank you for the introduction, mayor, and good evening, councilmembers. Tonight, I just want to note that this is a quasi-judicial matter and provide a little bit of background about the order business will take tonight. So, this evening, we'll have a brief staff report, followed by council disclosures that will be led by the city attorney of any ex parte contacts, followed by the public hearing itself. Following the public hearing, council will be asked to approve the two, the resolution and the ordinance that the mayor read into the record. And we are hoping to receive approval, recommend, an approval on both of those items this evening. So, those are in Attachment E and F of your packet materials. So, I'm going to introduce Principal Planner Tim McCarg, and he's going to lead you through a brief staff report in anticipation of the rest of the meeting.
Good evening, mayor and council. Tim McCarg, Principal Planner. I am back to give you a brief presentation this evening, an overview of this project, primarily for the benefit of anyone from the public attending tonight who might want to comment. So, I will quickly go through this, as you've seen most of the presentation at the past business meeting. What we're doing is, as Director Helen just mentioned, is we're holding a quasi-judicial hearing tonight on a consolidated application for the Master Plan Development Agreement and two site plan entitlements. So, you will consider public testimony tonight, after the staff report, and then approve or deny the application, and then, if appropriate, vote on the resolution and ordinance. Quick refresher regarding the location and the site. So, we are in kind of the core of the Overlake Village neighborhood, at the intersection, the northeast quadrant of the intersection of 152nd Avenue and northeast 24th Street. This is a three-phase project, kind of moving counterclockwise from the northwest. That's Phase 1. Phase 2 is at the actual intersection, and then Phase 3 is up 24th Street. This is the site and phasing plan that I just went through. So, Phase 1 there is in the upper left-hand corner. Phase 2, Buildings B and C are in the lower left-hand corner. And then, the final Phase 3 is in the lower right-hand corner, Building D. Phase 1, Building A, is an eight-story mixed-use building. Building B is also an eight-story mixed-use building. And then, Building C is an eight-story multifamily building. And the final phase, Building D, is either going to be an office building or a multifamily building. If Phase D is, or, excuse me, Building D is in fact a multifamily building, the project would be composed of approximately 1,100 residential units. Quickly buzzing through some images here to give you a character of the design. This is Building 1, moving kind of from the northwest portion of the project, and then counterclockwise around, down 152nd and up 24th. So, the image on the left is from 152nd and Hopper. The southwest building corner is, again, fronting 152nd, and that's an internal access drive, private drive that you're seeing there. This is Building B, which is the building at the corner of 152nd and 24th. Again, there's the northwest building corner with, adjacent to the access drive, and that's the actual building relationship to the corner there in the image on the right-hand side. Skip through. So, those are the, oh, this is Building C, excuse me. So, Building C is moving up 24th. What you see in the left-hand image there is the entry to a common open space feature, a pedestrian connection through the site. And then, the right-hand image is of that opposite building corner up 24th, and the drive that you see there in front of that building is a private access drive that connects through the site and around. So, to give you an idea of how the pedestrian and vehicular connectivity works, the image on the left-hand side is kind of the other end, if you will, the non-street end of the common open space feature that goes through the development. And then, the image on the right is just giving you a notion of kind of how pedestrian connectivity works around and within the site. So, the areas highlighted in yellow are actual public street frontages. The image in blue, or the area in blue identified on the right-hand side of that is the urban pathway that will go between this project and the Pixel Project, which is immediately adjacent to the east. And then, the pink areas are internal circulation areas. So, the central open space feature is the prominent feature there, landscapes. It's got some slope to it, so the path somewhat meanders. There'll be a water feature there. There'll be some opportunities for public art, seating opportunities, opportunities for pop-up type of events and features within there. And then, there's a hill climb coming up from 152nd into the site. And then, ultimately, this internal network will connect to the adjacent King County Metro Station, which is to the north of the site. So, we went through at the business. So we went through at the business meeting kind of what the development agreement is proposing. The, the asks, if you will, or the requested flexibilities include phasing of the project, a 10-year term with a five-year extension. They would be, remain vested to the current codes during the term of the development agreement. And then somewhat of a technical issue is to allow the use of active multifamily uses along the street frontage on 152nd, which is designated as a retail street. Kind of the public benefits that are being proposed as, as a quid pro quo for the, that flexibility. There's publicly accessible open space that I spoke to. There's public art opportunities, not just within that open space, but along the street frontages. Urban pathway enhancements that include seating and additional landscaping. There's a public bicycle maintenance facility on 152nd. Enhanced paving and lighting throughout the site, including all of the pedestrian connections that I showed earlier. Street furniture, particularly along the 152nd frontage, which is the retail street frontage, to kind of activate that street frontage and integrate that space with the retail that's being proposed on the ground floor there. And then a couple of features related to kind of making Overlake a little bit more family-friendly, which I know is a goal of council. Inclusion of three-bedroom units within the project at a higher proportion than would typically, typically be seen. And then inclusion of family-focused amenities, which are things like student-only study areas, areas for older, multi-generational families, for older folks to get together, congregate, and things of that nature. Quick summary of the community outreach and involvement that has happened for this project. Notice of application went out in September of 2022. That was re-noticed for some technical reasons on January 30th of 23. And a 21-day comment period is, is associated with that notice of application. And then there was a neighborhood meeting that was also noticed by posting and mailing that occurred on November 29th of 2023. Summarizing the comments that we received during the notice of application period and at the neighborhood meeting, people were concerned about tree removal and construction noise and construction schedule because of primarily the level of construction activity that's occurring in this area of Overlake. So there's a bit of construction fatigue that was expressed. Some technical comments about the design of the sidewalk, bike lane, and cycle track on 24th and 152nd. And then a lot of, particularly at the neighborhood meeting, a lot of existing businesses within the existing center on the site wanted to know about notification, how tenants would be notified in terms of timeframes and construction schedules. And we, we covered that in response at the business meeting. And then the public hearing notice was issued 21 days prior to tonight's hearing, and I have not received any additional public comments in response to their notice of the public hearing. In conclusion, the big finish. As detailed in the staff report and the technical committee recommendation, the technical committee has found that the master development plan complies with all applicable requirements of the zoning code, as does the development agreement and the two-site plan entitlement applications. So based on that finding of compliance, the technical committee is recommending approval of this consolidated application, subject to the conditions outlined in the technical committee's recommendation. And I am available for questions. I do want to point out that the applicant's team is here. They do not have a presentation to make formally, but if there are any questions of that team, they are more than happy to answer them this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff? Council President.
Thank you very much for the presentation and for the information that was provided in response to council questions. I do think for the listening public, probably one of the biggest issues that will be top of mind, as you mentioned, that were part of the community meeting, would be the potential displacement of businesses. And there was some information included in our packet, but I'm curious if you can summarize some of the responses to how tenants have been engaged and notified, as well as any efforts potentially to be able to have businesses that may have to move out during construction come back into some of that mixed-use development over time.
Yeah. And I may ask, ask the applicant for the project to summarize that because the communications have been between them as the owner of the parcel and the lessees, the business owners. So they have informed the tenants. Many of the tenants have already found other locations and so essentially have moved out of the space. For those who remain, they are, they're being informed on a regular basis of the construction schedule. They are working with those tenants to try to locate other spaces for them to go to. And for those tenants that may have leases that would extend beyond the initiation of construction, they will be providing relocation assistance to those particular businesses. And I will turn it over.
Tim did a great job. He might as well be on my property management team. We've, we've been in constant communication with our tenants. Our property management team does a really good job of making sure that their businesses are able to operate to the fullest extent while we're working through this process. This is, it's taken a little bit longer than we anticipated, so that communication has been steady. And we've, yeah, we're happy to, to let everyone know that they've, all the tenants have found alternative homes, the majority of which are staying in Redmond, and they're awaiting our notification of when we'll start work. So there's, no one has, has left other than Mayori. Mayori moved to the former Amazon Go location, which is still in the City of Redmond, and they're actually doing much better in that location. There's better parking and visibility. And they've kept a location. We're, we're working with them to keep their bakery and some other things operating while they're still in transition and while we haven't started construction. So hopefully that answers your question.
Yeah. Just that one follow-up, and thank you so much, is, do you anticipate any of the businesses that are moving out right now to move back in once some of this is built?
We've extended that to them. Obviously, there's, there's a significant capital expenditure that they're going to have to put into their tenant improvements wherever they, they are in the interim. And so, you know, we'll be, we'll be looking for tenants to come into that retail space, and we would welcome them. It's, it's going to be ultimately be a business decision for them of whether they want to abandon the improvements that they've put into their space in the interim or not.
Yeah, that makes sense. It'll be, be a little while, but I, I do hope, I think, one of the great things about this area is the diversity of businesses that we have in that area. So as, as new businesses come in, or hopefully others come back, that we maintain that diversity of businesses there. Thanks.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I'll go to Council Vice President and then Council Member Slahudin.
Thank you. Just looking at the development agreement requested flexibility slide and the request for the use of active multifamily uses on the ground floor, do we have an idea of percentage-wise what amount of space would be taken up for those multifamily versus businesses that could be in that area?
It's less than 20%. And most of that is comprised of a lobby. And so the way that the code language is worded, it doesn't really recognize the fact that mixed-use buildings need to have a, a ground floor lobby of, with a, an entrance and, you know, certain types of facilities, a mailroom, and things of that nature. So this is a fairly common issue that we bump into. But it's not as if, you know, it's displacing any potential retailer or other commercial enterprises on the ground floor.
Great. Thank you for that clarification. That's the first, I think, I've heard that issue with the code, so it's really interesting to hear that. And of course, they need a lobby.
Yep. Yep. Thank you.
Council Member?
Yep. Thank you. I just want to follow up on Council President Kritzer's question, and very appreciative of your response. I think of anywhere in Redmond, that, you know, business complex is where I probably go to the most for that diversity of small businesses and restaurants. And I think the opportunities that can be provided, you know, what you're doing and what you've laid out, I'm really appreciative of that. And also appreciative of that, the community outreach and involvement. I think that is really critical to, you know, really inform the, the neighboring community of what's going on, knowing that, you know, 1,100 potential, you know, homes for people, this is going to be really big, and an opportunity for us to really engage with 1,100, hopefully new residents who are coming to Redmond. And I think that, or more. I think that the opportunity there to continue to get feedback is going to be really critical, especially when, you know, you're really iterating on what's being done as property managers. Is there a plan for, you know, hopefully, once folks are housed, getting more input, continuing that conversation, and seeing, you know, what opportunities there are for future engagement?
You know, I work, and particularly in terms of Overlake, with Philly Marsh, who's our economic development manager, and Philly is very keen on this area, not only in terms of outreach to the existing businesses, but trying to figure out ways to support business retention and working proactively with developers in the early stages to try to create spaces within these buildings that are going to be able to accommodate a diverse range of commercial activities, you know, particularly eating, food and beverage type of places, which can really define the community, create a tremendous amount of activity, and hopefully satisfy those, the people who live in those 1,100 new units. It's challenging, particularly in new builds, to try to get all of the mechanical equipment in place at the initial build to support food and beverage. But those are things that she's working diligently on, and so I know that there'll be outreach associated with that. She's also keen, I believe, to try to create some opportunities for more pop-up markets or night markets in Overlake, to try to grow businesses, hopefully to the point where they can sustain their business and then get into maybe a brick-and-mortar type of setup. So, yeah, those are the things that I know that she's working on. So, yeah, the conversation will be ongoing.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Seeing none, thank you, thank you both very much. And, oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, Council Member Stewart. Sorry about that. Thank you.
That's okay. No worries. I was leaving space. Thank you so much, and I appreciate the conversation of my colleagues. Obviously, talking about Overlake is one of my favorite things to do. So thank you so much for being here tonight and for the conversation. In terms of the community feedback that was received on the construction fatigue, I think that's something for this council to be thinking of as, as we continue on in the next little while, and also wishing our development partners all the speed in the world and that hopefully that extension, that, of that five-year option, hopefully just won't be needed for a variety of reasons. I wondered if the development team could speak a tiny bit about how, especially given the changes that the world has gone through in the last little while and, and whatever crystal ball folks may be looking into now, how you might begin to think about the, the phase three and whether or not to go housing or, or office? I think it would be helpful for the public to hear just a little bit of that.
Thank you for coming back up.
Get my steps in. By the way, I'm Jameis William with Merlone Geyer. Didn't get a chance to introduce myself before. We will obviously be, be looking at next steps for when we begin this project, and the outreach will, will continue. Can you remind me your question one more time? Sorry. Phase three, sorry.
Could you, sorry, I had a long.
We already submitted, we already had a pre-app with the city for phase three, which is, is going to be a multifamily building. So the office market, as you may have noticed, is not quite as robust as it once was. And in the interest of moving this project forward and, and given the feedback we've received from the design review committee and from technical staff, we are advancing that plan.
Thank you very much, and thank you to Tim and the team for your presentation tonight.
Thanks. Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Thank you. Thank you, Tim. And with that, I am now opening the public hearing. I, I have, I would have a sign-in sheet for members of the public to speak tonight, but no one has signed to speak in person or in remotely. Yes. Okay. And so I don't, if we did have anyone, they would have three minutes to address the council, but we do not have anyone signed up this evening. And so with that, I will close the public hearing. We also received no written comments as well. Is, do you want to do that before the motion?
Yes.
Oh, right. Mr. Kenny.
Okay. Good evening, council. As you know, this is a type five decision, which is a quasi judicial decision. And so I'm going to run through just a few questions for each of you to consider and answer in accordance with the appearance of fairness doctrine to explore possible ex parte contacts and get disclosures. And so I'll read four questions, and if you could each answer them as a group, if there's an affirmative answer, you can just let me know. The first question is, do you or your family have any interest in the subject property?
No.
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 Thank you.
No.
No.
Thank you. The second question, do you personally stand to gain or lose by your decision on this matter?
No.
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 Thank you. Third question, other than the prior discussions with staff, as are noted in the agenda bill, have you had any ex parte communication with persons other than staff regarding this matter?
No.
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 I get to skip two questions now? Thank you. And the final question is broadly for the general audience, does anybody object to any of the council members participating in this matter? Those are all of my questions, and there's nothing further from me.
All right. Thank you so much. Is there a motion to approve AM number 24-090, MGP 12 Overlake East Master Plan Development Development Agreement and Phase One and Two Site Plan Entitlements?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote starting with Council President Kritzer.
Aye.
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 And that passes six to zero. Thank you all very much, and thank you to our team, and congratulations to the developers. Thank you, Mr. Kenny, as well. Our next item, let's see. Our next item of business is ombuds reports for the month of May. We have Council Member Nwava Kamina, if she wants to finish anything up. And then for the month of June, we have Council Member Stewart.
I have nothing. That was hanging over from the month of May, just a whole lot of events that I'll recap after Council Member Stewart's June ombuds.
Great. Thank you. Council Member Stewart.
Great. Thank you so much. We had a resident who sent us a photo with four Lime scooters parked in the middle of a sidewalk. They had already contacted Lime to have this issue resolved with the blocked sidewalk, but really asked that council pay attention to the balance of the micro-mobility program and the needs of all users to be able to access our sidewalks. We had a question on Plymouth, and I just wanted to, on the Plymouth Housing, and I just wanted to remind the public that council will meet with Plymouth Housing at our July 16th business meeting. And I encourage members of the public who have questions that they would like aired in that space to, to go ahead and be sending those questions to us now. We also had, Plymouth also had a touch base with the Design Review Board on June 13th, and the materials from that meeting have now been added to our webpage on this project, which you can access at redmond.gov/PH. Council received an invitation to participate in the Green Redmond Partnership Event at Arthur Johnson Park on June 30th. This event is open to the public, and registration is still open. We received an email from a resident with questions about the Bellwether development near the Overlake Village Light Rail Station. Staff provided some requested information today, so I will go ahead and respond to that resident shortly. And then a few of my own ombud items today. I helped answer a question for a group of volunteers about how they could offer a free storytime program in Redmond Parks and got them connected to the right staff for that. At my office hours, we discussed Plymouth Housing, and I directed a resident to those materials on the Design Review Board site. We discussed how the city is planning for growth and feedback on council's interest in a joint session with the Lake Washington School Board. And I received a question on a particular tree replacement allocation that staff are helping me to follow up on. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Are there any other ombuds items for this evening? Council Vice President?
Thank you. Council Member Stewart reminded me that I also had a conversation on the storytime in the parks, so also made some hopeful good connections there as well. Had a contact about the, I think it was a 2.7 earthquake that we had on, on 616 at 12:03 a.m. People wondering if we actually had an earthquake. Yes, we did. Happened over on Avondale. Conversations about bike safety, including the Bellevue portion of what would be bellred and connection, critical connections there. Attended the safe parking opening in Bellevue and got to see some of our staff there as well, so that was pretty incredible. So there's a safe parking site over near the Trader Joe's and REI now for the folks who might need somewhere safe to park. Had some conversations around 2050 and growth goals and planning, conversations around the future of cricket in Redmond, and conversations about Lake Washington. the future of cricket in Redmond, and conversations about Lake Washington School District overcrowding and school lunch debt.
Thank you. Any other ombuds items for this evening? Councilmember Nueva Camina.
Thank you, Mayor. It's a very, very busy month in the month of June, but first let me just want to congratulate all the grads of 2024, both from high school and college. Been thoroughly enjoying seeing all of the pics posted on socials across all the platforms of families celebrating the achievements, because it's not just the grad, it's the families behind them as well, if they're so fortunate. What a busy, busy month, month of June. Attended the art opening over at the Together Center that was hosted by Eastside for All on June 6th, and was happy to show some support for our neighbors over in Kirkland for their Pride, their second annual Pride on June 7th. On June 9th, I was honored to be able to represent the city at Sri Thiragavaja, which brought dancers from across the United States, from several states, including India, as far away as India, and got to support that art transcends language, language divides and grounds us in our humanity, which is wonderful. Went right from a very formal performance over to shenai beats, which was very uplifting and very upbeat. And the stage was at our Redmond Senior and Community Center, which was so wonderful to be in that space and have it being used exactly how, one of the ways in which we had intended. On June 13th, Pride Rainbow on the East Side Artist Reception opened up the gallery over at Central Cultural Mahicano, and it was just absolutely wonderful seeing that for the community. That showing will be continuing from June 5th through the 28th, from noon to 5:00. I was honored to be able to speak over to our neighbors in Edmonds for their Pride event last Friday, and attended the Juneteenth Celebration in Juanita, at Juanita High after a relocation. And that really took an entire team to put on, from event planning team led by Commissioner Sheila Stanton to Naima Webb, Deion Butler from BAM, James Randolph, Deputy Mayor in Woodenville, Joy Randolph, community organizer, Jean Allison, business owner, Nikala Rice. And that one featured Mr. Delbert Richardson with the Unspoken Truths American History Traveling Museum. A busy couple of weeks indeed.
I'm tired of just processing how much you did this last month, so thank you. Councilmember Slahudin.
Thank you. Yeah, had a lot of conversations this month, specifically on Plymouth Housing with some residents, as well as Councilmember, Council Vice President Forsyth mentioned cricket conversations, so I've had a few conversations regarding potential opportunities for cricket pitches in Redmond. Had a conversation with Amazon about an aerospace certificate program in partnership with the Lake Washington Institute of Technology for young leaders, so that is an opportunity if folks want to learn more. And I did also connect with Deputy Chief Coats on the opportunity with the Redmond Police Department on a youth police academy, so more information can be found online for that. And finally, I attended, I believe it was yesterday, the Quadrant Technologies Ribbon Cutting, and Police Chief Daryl Lowe was there, One Redmond CEO Christina Hudson, and Indian Consul General to Seattle, Mr. Prakash Gupta. There is a brand-new office for a technology company that will be, you know, serving a lot of Redmond residents, and a lot of community members were there, so they're really excited about the opportunity for more growth in the tech field in our community.
Great, thank you. And Council President.
I received a couple of different emails about bike safety, and just for those listening, including those who've come to speak tonight, know that we are right now currently working with staff on a subcommittee, just looking at a lot of our planning around bike and pedestrian safety and trying to find more ways to connect, especially in advance of the light rail coming in, and also looking at how we, how that mixes up with also other types of flexible transit and multimodal options, and doing some kind of innovations in that planning, so working on that with Council Vice President Forsyth and Council member Stewart, and we'll bring back some of those, some of that work to the council going forward, but definitely taking in some of the public comments that we've gotten recently around bike safety and that work. Also met with a resident to talk about some more of their concerns around increasing population and needs for our elementary schools, and getting some ideas for hopefully the upcoming conversation that we'll have with the school board. I also just wanted to note for my fellow council members that I also got that message about the Storytime in parks, and also been following up, so it might be good for us to coordinate to make sure we're not, we're all kind of getting, getting some forward progress on that. I also, we also received some nice messages in response to our meeting with the Parks Trails and Recreation Commission, and I got some, some feedback from a resident about a recent event at the Senior Center, just reflecting on how fun that was and what a great event that was, so hope everyone enjoyed it. Also was able to attend the Forest Steward Appreciation Picnic with our Forest Stewards that take care of all of our different urban forests throughout Redmond as part of the Green Redmond Program historically, and it was really cool to be able to hear about each of their different efforts that they do and the amount of community members that they engage regularly, of all ages and backgrounds. One Forest Steward, I'll note, has devoted over 900 hours to removing invasive plants and planting new trees, just in his forest that he stewards alone, so I just wanted to recognize how amazing that is, and also heard the feedback from them that was echoes really of what we heard in our Parks Trails and Recreation Commission meeting the other week of just how they would love to be even more connected with those who are interested in volunteering, because they have a lot of work always to be done to be able to make Redmond green, but just want to put that out there that we love our parks and we love our green spaces, and so much of that happens because of average people within our community pitching in and leading within their own neighborhoods. So, just want to put a little thank you out there from our council, and I was able to say that on behalf of the council at that event. I also received some questions and ideas around potential ways to shore up our existing tenant protections. I also got to have a conversation with some folks at King County about housing policy, and where they were really interested in what we're up to in Redmond and excited about some of that work that we're doing. And then just wanted to also note that this upcoming weekend, there'll be the Vegetarian Festival, and was invited to that, would encourage everyone to attend that in downtown Redmond. And also just wanted to note, wish everyone a happy Juneteenth tomorrow. The city will be issuing a proclamation via social media. I checked in with our staff, and I think hopefully next year we can make sure that we get the timing right for our meeting to actually verbally do that, that Juneteenth proclamation, but I did want to note for everyone that we will be having that, and if you didn't get to go to the great event that Councilmember Nueva Camina talked about this weekend, I believe that Kenmore tomorrow will be having an event starting at 3:00 in their town square to celebrate Juneteenth as well. And I think that's all. Thanks.
Councilmember Slahudin.
Yeah, really quickly, Council President Kritzer reminded me by sharing an event this weekend that there's actually a lot more events this weekend that are happening, so the Redmond East Side Made Pop-Up, which is from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. in a loft hotel Redmond hosted by One Eastside, great community gathering there. There's also a Overlake Open Streets Festival, which is hosted by Move Redmond in the Overlake community, and that is also 10 to 3:00. And then the Indian American Community Services is hosting a night market. Unfortunately, it's in Bellevue and not in Redmond, but IACS serves the greater community, and they're actually in the Together Center, so great opportunity to engage with community, a lot of vendors there as well. I believe the time, it ends at 9:00 p.m. I don't know exactly when it starts, but it's in the evening time.
All right, thank you. Any other ombuds reports for this evening? Councilmember Nueva Camina.
Just one that I had forgotten to mention that had come up during Committee of the Whole earlier. I was able to speak with several students each from Rose, I keep saying Rose Hill, I said it then, to Redmond High School, Evergreen Middle, and Lake Washington High regarding the Community Resource Officers. It's listed in the Memorandum of Understanding to be allowed to be employed by the school district for such activities as coaching athletics, driving a bus, and other extracurricular activities, to get their feedback on what their thoughts was on that and their experience already with the Community Resource Officer, or CRO. So, spoke with approximately 10 from each school for that.
Thank you. Are there any committee reports this evening? Council Vice President.
Thank you. Councilmember Nueva Camina and I attended the Disability Board meeting and swiftly approved those medical expenses for those folks. And also in the sharing of upcoming events, I serve on the East Rail Regional Advisory Committee, and we will be opening the East Rail Northeast Eighth Bridge on Sunday at noon, so if you want to get out for a nice bike ride, that connection that takes you right there by the Wilburton Light Rail Station and it matches up with the East Rail is going to be opening, so it's very exciting. It's been a little bit of a delay due to steel shortages, but it's going to be opening this Sunday, so come check it out.
Thank you so much. Any other committee reports? Councilmember Slahudin.
Earlier today, we had our Public Safety and Human Services Committee of the Whole, where we had four items on the agenda. Two of them were ordinances amending the Redmond Municipal Code 4.20 and 2.52, which were really, these are moving toward the consent agenda, but really excited about these opportunities for updating our code to qualify, the first one to qualify candidates to also, qualify job candidates to also include lawful permanent residents or DACA recipients, so really expanding our opportunities for employment in Redmond. And then the second is removing all instances of gendered language with gender neutral, gender neutral terms in the Redmond Fire Department Code, so making sure that we're being inclusive in all aspects there. We also, as Councilmember Nueva Camina mentioned, spoke about the Lake Washington School District 2324 School Community Resource Officer Contract Agreement, and we got an update on the light rail and the security plan there. Also had the One Redmond Foundation Board meeting last week, and got some updates that we've received in councils, specifically from our city staff on the Tourism Strategic Plan, but this meeting was primarily to elect new leadership, so Jessica Kravitz will be serving as president of the board, Menka Soney as vice president, and former council member Pat Vache as treasurer, and Bill Biggs as past president, and former council member David Carson will be serving another term, as well as Leitha Sambamurthy. So, that was really exciting to be able to have, you know, their leadership continue on. And then we also had, Council President Kritzer and I had the Eastside Transportation Partnership, where a large chunk of the meeting was spent on King County Metro Safety and Security Updates, and so I was planning on connecting with Council President Kritzer to, you know, maybe get a summary of that and share it with the council so that we can all be informed of, you know, the, what Metro is doing to make sure that our transit is safe and reliable for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you so much. You all are reminding me, Tim, that it has been a very busy spring, so way to go, everyone. I have three quick updates for committee reports. First is that I apologize for not being able to be there in person. I am in Vancouver for the Association of Washington City's Annual Conference and Annual Meeting. On Thursday, I will be meeting with the Legislative Priorities Committee, which I'm serving on this year, to continue to shape the legislative agenda for 2025, and then on Friday, we have the annual meeting. At the annual meeting, we will be adopting the revised Statement of Policy that I have previously briefed the council on, and some of the changes that are there. We did have staff review that document, and one amendment was brought forward, so I'll be putting that in the amendment hopper for that, and it came from Jenny Liebeck, and it's really ensuring that the EWC Statement of Policy includes not just support for all of the work we need to do to plan for climate change, but also funding the implementation of those plans. So, I appreciate Amy Tsai and Jenny Liebeck for digging deeply on that, and I will get that taken care of. Last week, I attended the Public Issues Committee of the Sound Cities Association. We had a few briefings, including an update on the crisis care implementation update, and some recent changes that had been adopted in that program. And then we had a pretty robust conversation on a request from our neighboring cities in South King County on a regional alignment messaging exercise, if you will, on the Asili and Refugee Crisis. I have provided that draft to the council. Additionally, I learned today that the SCA Board chose not to adopt that today, but rather to bring it back to the Public Issues Committee for a third time, so that it can really actually, it's been, it'll have been with us for three times, but it does deserve a bit more conversation. So, if anyone on our council has feedback, please do share that with me for next month. And then finally, the, we had a meeting of the Growth Management Planning Board at PSRC. A big chunk of this conversation was gearing up for the work to come, so we all know that cities like ours have to adopt our comprehensive plans by the end of the year, and then the bodies like the Growth Management Planning Board will begin the work of reviewing those documents, and so we are getting ourselves organized for how that work in early 2025 will be accomplished. It's quite a lift, and for those cities who would like to be eligible for transportation dollars by the, in the next funding cycle, transportation funding, their plans will need to be certified by September of 2025. So, the early part of the year for that board looks to be quite busy. We also had a briefing on housing trends for Asian-American and Pacific Islander populations. This was specifically a presentation on looking at specific groups within this very, very large moniker, and making sure that we are able to dig into the details using the microdata from the last census about what is, say, the Hawaiian population experiencing, what is the Indian population, what is the Chinese population experiencing. So, it was good to see a lot of, a lot of what we suspected about our communities actually on the page. That was very helpful, and we discussed also the new PSRC Equity Tracker, which is great. Next month, we'll be getting a briefing on the Tree Equity Collaborative and working on some tree protection ordinance policy stuff, so that's coming up in July. Thank you.
Thank you. Council President.
Thank you. I will follow up on the Eastside Transportation Partnership, which I'll note, thank you to our staff that helped us to actually host that here in Redmond. We had a hybrid meeting, and we're able to actually make it work pretty well, to be able to host many of our other neighboring cities to come in person to talk about transportation issues in our region, and then also have folks who are able to participate online, so big kudos especially to Amy Tsai, who helped us to set up a lot of logistics on that, as well as the supporting staff. I just wanted to note, as Councilmember Slahudin noted, it was actually a really interesting meeting with presentations from Metro and WashDOT. The presentation from Metro, just wanted to highlight two things that jumped out for me. One was the statistic that currently, as of this last year, in terms of number of incidents on Metro, it was at the level of about 90 incidents per 1 million boardings. So, you know, overall, it's really so safe to be riding transit, and just encourage everyone to be using transit, getting out there, and not necessarily reading that one scary story on the news, because it really is a very small blip within a lot of relatively safe system. At the same time, got to hear a lot about the efforts that they're making to make it even safer, and especially the work that they've been doing since they did their safety, security, and fair enforcement reform, which includes kind of a mixture of different types of services. One of the areas they highlighted was their Safe Ambassadors Pilot, where they're having, providing in-person customer service of these ambassadors that are at different metro stations that are, that are most used, who provide in-language assistance in over 140 languages, and often are bus operators who might have, might be off-duty due to an injury or something like that, they're on light duty, who are able to create a more welcoming presence, and then also have a broad knowledge of the system to help people to kind of navigate between different things. So, anyway, I think that's a really interesting pilot that they're, they're doing in addition to other types of security and other types of kind of support to make a more welcoming environment in the bus system. And then the other thing that I'll note that we also had was, since the theme of this meeting was on safety, was that we also had a presentation from WashDOT about some of the work that's going on around safety for bicyclists, pedestrians, et cetera, and noted that, that we're on an 11-year increase in serious deaths and injuries, and just are trending in the wrong direction across our state, even though- and just are trending in the wrong direction across our state, even though we're, we, you know, here in the city of Redmond and across the state have set really ambitious Vision Zero goals and Target Zero goals, we need to take action to be able to to make our streets safer for everyone. So it was pretty kind of sobering day, I'll send that along to the council, the presentation that they gave, but also a lot of really good ideas on ways to be able to approach the multimodal traffic safety crisis, as they termed it. So I think there's a lot of good opportunities for us to be able to to improve there. And then I'll also note that I attended the King County, King Conservation District Advisory Committee Meeting. We're still working on the update to their ILA, and there's quite a bit of proposed changes, so we've had now several meetings. We usually meet every other month, but instead we've been meeting every month, and we'll meet again this upcoming month, hopefully to give, get some final language, that then we'll go to the King County Council, but with, hopefully with with the blessing of the advisory committee. So just working through some of those different issues. They do a great job, and and just trying to look towards the future. And then last, I'll note that Mayor Bernie and I were able to attend the One Redmond Board Off-Site Retreat, in which we did some half-day of of kind of visioning and discussion about the the present and future of One Redmond, and in particular, how our public-private partnerships can work better, and just kind of thinking about the the vibrancy of the city of Redmond and and how we can work towards that, those collective goals together. So that was really interesting, and look forward to some of the follow-up from that. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? Councilmember Noiva Kamina?
Thank you, Mayor. Typically, I would report out on my committee report on the next business meeting, however, our committee planning, agenda planning meeting today was canceled as we only had one item, and staff was not feeling well. And also, I'll be getting with council leadership to see if we want to utilize that Committee of the Whole for another committee, because I know that we are packed right now, or if we're going to reschedule and have that one item go on to another committee meeting. So I'll be following up with city, or with county, with council, to get it right the third time, with council leadership on that.
Great, thank you so much, appreciate that. I just wanted to share that I'm the vice chair of the Regional Policy Committee, and we have spent the last few months working on the Crisis Care Center Implementation Plan, which was mentioned earlier, and I'm very, very happy with the work that we did, working with all of the different cities, as well as the County Council in Seattle, to ensure that the implementation of that very important levy will come to fruition, so I'm happy to report that today the County Council did pass in full our implementation plan that we worked through, so really happy. And I I just wanted to share how much work our staff, the city of Redmond staff, did on that, to kind of step in regionally. So Amy Sai, as well as Brooke Buckingham and others, really did an amazing job of pulling together information to help us make very good decisions on that. So we're all looking forward to those Crisis Care Centers opening up sometime soon to serve our community that really desperately needs them, so just wanted to share that as well. Been very proud of that work that we did. And with that, those are all the committee reports. Next, we have, we have no unfinished business, but we do have new business. AM number 24091, Approval of an Interlocal Agreement Between the City of Redmond and the City of Bellevue for Intersection Improvements at Northeast 40th Street and 148th Avenue Northeast is, Chris Stinger is here to introduce this item. Mr. Stinger?
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. As introduced, I am Chris Stinger, Deputy Director of Public Works, and joining me tonight via teams are Patty Criddle, Transportation Engineering Supervisor, and Adnan Shabir, Transportation Senior Engineer. We're here tonight to provide information regarding the interlocal agreement between the city of Redmond and the city of Bellevue for intersection improvements of Northeast 40th Street and 148th Avenue. The estimate for the city of Redmond's portion of the project is $275,000. Intent is to fund out of the transportation benefit district. The city of Bellevue expects to put the project out to bid by fall 2024. The project anticipated completion is in late 2025, and the city of Redmond would be invoiced for our portion once the project is complete. The interlocal agreement has been reviewed by both municipalities' city attorneys with no comments or concerns. The scope of the project includes pavement grinding, overlay, ADA ramp reconstruction, traffic loop signal installation, traffic control, utility lid adjustments, and related improvements at the previous stated intersection. And regarding the impact of the project's expenditure on our service, based on our current monthly revenue of $370,000 and anticipated annual projections of approximately $5 million for 2024, there are no foreseeable impacts. The startup and operational costs for 2024, including staffing, equipment, and materials are estimated to be around $1.8 million, and as referred, the joint ILA project is expected to be completed and invoiced for the $275,000 in late 2025. Considering the projected 2025 collection of $5,384,977, our team is confident that there will be minimal to no impact on service delivery, and this concludes the brief introduction, and the team is standing by for any further questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Are there any questions on this item? Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you, Deputy Director, for bringing this item back to us, and just for those following along, we had, we had previously understood that this item would come from a different funding source. So Deputy Director, I appreciate you sharing today, and I I got your email just before this meeting, actually, with the numbers that you shared today. This this expenditure out of the TBD of up to $275,000, now regardless, this is an important project, I I I can get behind this expenditure, and I think in asking the question about the impacts to the 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 health of the TBD, we all knew when we adopted the TBD that it was not the end-all, be-all, the the one solution that was going to fund all of the needs that we had, even in pavement management preservation. So I'm going to trust that the team is is prioritizing this project over some of the other work that we're hoping that the TBD can fund, and knowing that the TBD can't fund all of the work that we would like to see done in the city. So by by giving you you and your team the opportunity to to say if you if you had a different way to go, thank you for responding to that today, and I appreciate you bringing this back on business. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for staff? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve this item? Council President?
Sorry, quick question before I do the motion. I was just curious, could you send the whole council that that information as well? I don't think I I received that information from you.
Most definitely.
Great, thank you. And I am happy to to move this item.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved, and seconded, is there any discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote, starting with Council President Kritzler.
Aye.
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 Aye. And that passes six to zero. Thank you very much for approving that item, we really appreciate it. There is no executive session. I did want to mention that we have Derby Days fast approaching in a month, and currently we have, the councils will be having a space on the patio, the front patio of City Hall, and I want to make sure that every, the council members know that they will be the ones staffing the booth. In the past, we have had some other boards or commissions helping, but they're going to be helping us with city things, city staffing, and so it'll be up to the council to staff that booth. I think you start it from 11 to 2 or 3? What's that?
I guess 12, 10.
Was it 12? Yeah. No, 10 is the parade. You guys are in the parade, too.
We, Deidre's.
Yeah, well, we'll, but make sure, I just want to make sure it gets on everyone's calendar, so we have it fully staffed by all of you, so everyone can meet you and talk with you. Council President?
Thank you. Appreciate that information, and I will note, yeah, that that our legislative coordinator has sent out an email. If everyone can respond, that would be great. My understanding was that we were going to have commissioners join us, so we'll we'll follow up on that, and I'll make sure to send out to the council an update so that, as well as to the commissioners, because we have had a few commissioners inquire of whether they could join us, and we had originally heard yes, so we'll just follow up on that and and let them know the opportunities. Definitely want to make sure that our commissioners have the opportunity to be participating. It sounds like just we'll be in two different booths. Okay, thanks.
Any other items for the council this evening? Yes, Councilmember Anderson?
Just a quick comment.
That's not right.
Just a quick comment?
Can you put, time? There you go.
Is that better? Thank you, sorry about that. Just a quick comment. I noticed on the public hearing this evening, the questions from Mr. Kenny are somewhat surprising to me, not because I haven't seen them before, but one thing is our audience probably doesn't know that there's an opportunity to object, so I wanted to ask if there's a possibility that we could get those questions published the next time we have a quasi-judicial
Sounds like a yes.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments this evening? Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned.